Good morning. This is Luke Revan, Assistant Manager here at East Brandywine Township. I am addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this work session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials and our residents, the Board is conducting this meeting via webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the Township website, consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for this meeting was also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter and is visible on your screen. Board members Jason Winters and Kyle Scribner, as well as township staff, including myself, are physically present in the Township building for this meeting. Members of the public can hear us, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. As with in-person meetings, I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by Chairman Winters before speaking, and that all comments be directed to the chairman. To be recognized, you must first ask me, in my capacity as the online moderator for this webinar, to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature located on the left side of your screen. The next agenda item this morning is public comment on non-agenda items. If you want to address the Board on this topic, please begin messaging me now. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and address before asking a question. Before I turn the meeting over to Chairman Winters, I have a last-minute request of the Board to amend your agenda. I respectfully ask that you consider adding, under New Business, Section V, an item numbered G, which is considering the award of a contract for Bonville Mill Improvements. This bid opportunity closed at 10:00 a.m. yesterday, and our engineer has worked at breakneck speed to produce a recommendation for your consideration. So at this time, I'd respectfully ask you to consider amending your agenda.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you. All right, I turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Chairman.
To go over the minutes for the previous meeting. For the approval of the October 10th, 2020 special meeting session, as well as the October 15th session.
I do have a question, though.
Yeah.
On the October 10th, 2020 meeting minutes, it says that at a special meeting, Michael Clark was appointed. You went on record as saying that the Board interviewed Michael Clark, as well as attorneys from several other law firms. I don't know who "several other" is. I wasn't part of several other law firms. I didn't see who they were.
As far as?
Several other law firms.
Well, sorry, it was the two. Do you want to change that to make it?
Who were the two other law firms?
It was Michael Clark and then the other law firm.
There was one other.
Yeah, so do you want to change it to two?
He wasn't there. That was your minutes.
Well, change it to two would be like... Did you want to make a motion for them or?
Not have our vice chair?
Reached out to you?
The vice chairman will be joining us by phone. I'm coordinating that right now. He's not currently part of the meeting. I'd also add, I've got a few comments. Just remind the Board to please speak into your microphones so that everyone at home can clear. Here, thanks.
Yes, I'll remind everybody. My question was to Supervisor Winters. The minutes from their October 10th meeting said that the Board interviewed Michael Clark, as well as attorneys from several other law firms. I wanted it to be noted that I was not present for several other law firms, so I wasn't sure what that was about.
And I said that it was actually two other law firms, so we'll go ahead and change those. Change those minutes to say two, just to...
So it's two other law firms or one other law?
Two law firms total, Kyle. We don't need to even ask for our piece for professional services.
That's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, again, just to be safe.
You were part of every interview.
That's exactly what I was asking. Was I part of it? Because I get confused sometimes.
Yes, there was no any other interviews.
All right, so I'm assuming that our vice chairman's not going to be making today's meeting. He's unable to, I guess, call in. So I can't make a motion on October 10th, but I will make a motion on October 15th, 2020.
I'll second that motion. Long favor?
Aye.
Aye. What we'll do is we'll just go ahead and table the special session, October 10th approval, until if we get George on the phone. He's on vacation right now. Is there any comments on non-agenda items?
I had one request in advance, and that was Bruce Rawling. I do not see his phone number in the list. So, no, I have no comment on non-agenda items at this time.
Okay. And now let's move on to Old Business, Open Space Committee's approval to spend additional open space funds on the Shyrock Open Space Acquisition of Parcels 3231197.89 and 32386.
All right, I've just sent an invitation to Mr. Fisher to become a presenter on this subject.
If I may, I believe the tax parcel numbers are incorrect. It's 30. Gosh. 32 is Upper Euclid.
Thank you.
There are two parcels that mirror these in Upper Euclid Township.
Can you hear me now, Jay Fisher?
Good morning, Jay.
Good morning. I'm sorry, I didn't. I had to unmute my end of it as well. Good morning, gentlemen. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the Open Space Committee to make a request for the Shyrock property. I'm sure that both of you can recall that we've been around and around about this property, which is owned by John Shelton, or one of his corporate concerns. And you had previously approved a contribution from the Open Space Committee in the amount of $25,000, with the understanding at that time that there would be a funding request done by Jack Steffaroo on behalf of the Conservancy for $181,200 from Chester County and $167,380 from the State of Pennsylvania, both being, the requests were both for grants. I think it was in August, the county approved the $181,200 to acquire part of this property. I don't know if you needed, whether Luke or Scott can bring up the map to show you exactly what we're talking about, but part of the property would be acquired by the county and then added to the Marsh Creek State Park. And the other part of the property was to be acquired by the township. And the significance of that is that part, it's a long, narrow strip of land that follows the Brandywine Creek and actually is adjacent to the piece that we already acquired from the Reserve at Dallin Forge Project. And without that piece, without the Shyrock piece, we would not have access to the creek. So it actually serves as sort of a buffer between the property we already acquired and the creek, which... So the Open Space Committee has reevaluated this proposal in light of the DNRC denial of the grant and is proposing that, proposes that the township contribute an additional $167,380 in addition to the $25,000 that's already been committed, so that we can complete this acquisition along with the county. And then the township would end up owning the piece that's outlined in black on the map that has been put up. Do you have any questions about that?
I do not have any questions. I just think, Mr. Fisher, if you wouldn't mind, just giving the public just a quick description of how open space funds are to be used.
Well, open space funds, as I think most people recognize, we have a... We had a referendum many years ago, and the township approved an additional tax to generate funds so that the township could acquire open space. And the open space can either be acquired, those funds can either be used to acquire what we call a fee interest. That's an outright interest, where the township actually owns the property. They can also be used to acquire easements, where we get an easement on someone else's property that prohibits them from further subdividing or developing that property. And then the funds can also be used, some portion of the funds can be used to maintain either the easements or the fee interest, the outright ownership properties that the township has acquired. And the purpose of the open space is to preserve lands from development in the future. This particular open space acquisition would give us the preservation of a long portion along the Brandywine Creek. And I don't know whether other people recognize that we, like where the Whiteacre Farms is, which is considerably south of this piece, we've done, not only acquired the land between Creek Road and the Brandywine Creek, but then the Brandywine Conservancy, along with the Open Space Committee and some other groups, have done some tree restoration in that area to try to rehabilitate the stream bank and the floodplain area. So that's the kinds of things that the open space is designed to do.
Thank you. Is this... Does it, there's also, what's the status for, there's that other small parcel that was 32-6-209? That it was in question whether that was part of the property or not early on?
I thought, to answer your question, my understanding, Mr. Winters, is that that piece that you're referring to is in Upper Euclid Township. And I'm not sure whether, my understanding is that that issue has been resolved, but I don't know the particulars of how that was resolved, whether this acquisition resolves that or there was some other resolution.
I don't believe it was resolved yet. That was my understanding the last time that I've heard about it.
Well, Mr. Steffaroo would have to address that because he's the one that's been working on the resolution. That piece is not part of what the township would acquire because we're acquiring basically the other side of the creek. The entire parcel would be divided, subdivided, and then part of it would end up owned by East Brandywine Township. The other part of it would be, end up owned by the county. And my understanding is the majority of what the county acquires, they are going to give to Marsh Creek State Park. Scott, feel free to correct me if I'm saying anything inaccurate.
No, you're absolutely correct, Jay.
So as far as the, do we have an exact amount that we're looking to fund here? Or are we just, are we going to do a, are we just doing parcel numbers now to nail down the details?
We have, we have a specific amount, Mr. Winters. So you have already committed $25,000. We're asking for, we're recommending that you agree to pay an additional And that will be, that, the two sums together would be sufficient to complete, for the National Lands Trust, to complete the acquisition of this property along with the funding from the county.
And, but we still don't know, we still have no idea about the other parcel, the small little triangle.
That, my understanding is that's not included in this acquisition.
Don't you think we should probably include that, so we're not revisiting this?
Well, Mr. Winters, that would not be, that parcel is, would be part of what the county and the National Lands Trust is dealing with, with respect to Marsh Creek Park. It has nothing to do with the portion of it that the township would be acquiring.
But I know, but when I spoke to Jack last, he'd said that that county and the state were not, were not going to be touching that parcel at that time. That's, that's the reason I was asking. I mean, it's, it's assessed $27,210 for 0.0493 acres, or total value, a little over $55,000. Yeah, I think we should probably include that, so we're not revisiting this again. And then that's going to be, that's going to be crucial for the, you know, for us, for the township to utilize that as a park or however we're going to utilize it, not just, you know, with open space.
Right. Mr. Fisher, could you clarify, assuming the Board acts to approve the additional funding for the purchase, the eventual owner of both parcels in fee will be Chester County, correct?
My understanding was it would be East Brandywine Township would own part of it, and Chester County would acquire part of it and then donate the part that Chester County acquires to the Marsh Creek Park. I think, I was looking through, before we got on, I was looking through my emails, and Jack Steffaroo responded to an email from Mr. Winters saying that the parcel, the entire parcel, would be divided between the county and the township.
But he doesn't have, but that's what I mean, but they don't have that parcel included here in his natural land trust, the fee acquisition and the transfer.
I'm assuming, Mr. Winters, that you are referring to the small, I'll call it a triangle of land, which is in the path of the intended or proposed Struble Trail extension.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that doesn't affect the East Brandywine portion of this acquisition?
No, but it should, though, because that's going to be, if we will, if we intend or decide to want to do something with this park, rather than just open space down the road, then that's going to be important for the township to be involved with the planning of the future of the trail extension.
I understand that it's important for the township to be involved in the planning for the trail extension, but that parcel would not, it's in Upper Euclid Township. I don't think there's, would be any reason for the township to be involved in the acquisition of that parcel. So I'm not sure I follow the issue.
Well, as far as the park itself, if we do decide, if the township is going to own the fee, and we decide that we want to have a park there, say a parking lot, say a restroom, important to the township, to utilize the funds from the counties to have interest in that, in where the trail's location is going to go, because there's going to have to be access from that parking lot.
Let me get this straight. We're, why would we purchase land in another township?
We already have before.
For this park. Why don't we worry about what's in our township right now?
Because if you have a park, if you take the map right here... For the, then we don't have, you know, we're not in a situation where we can't really do anything because we don't own that property.
Well, I think, Mr. Winters, if what you're suggesting, which I know was discussed with the Trails Committee at one point in time, would be that, that part of this parcel, I'll call it the northern end of this parcel, could serve as a parking lot trailhead with a bridge across the Brandywine to link that to the Struble Trail. The township would not have to own the land on the other side in order to do that. It would end up being a cooperative venture between the county, who I assume would either own that small triangle or have a right of way to extend the Struble Trail. So it would be a cooperative venture between the township and the county to put a bridge across there. You may be aware that the Trails Committee has worked on the concept of a bridge crossing the Brandywine Creek in the vicinity of Dallin Forge Road. And in that situation, we, that's the Whiteacre piece that I referred to earlier. We own the fee interest in Whiteacre, where the bridge lands on the other side of the creek. The township wouldn't own that, but that doesn't stop us from, if the county agrees and goes, and wants to participate in that, we would be able to construct that kind of a facility. So I'm not sure that we need to resolve the issue on that triangle and how the Struble Trail is going to get from where it ends now to where they intended to end. If we do build a facility, we certainly, I don't think the township would be in a position to fund that completely by themselves. So it would have to be a joint venture with the county, DNRC, whatever other entities would be involved. Ownership would not be an issue because that would be somebody else's issue, it being in another township.
Well, it'd be, it's going to be the owner's issue, which is still Shyrock Brothers of Natural Land Trust, or Euclid doesn't purchase it. That's my, my point is that we can't do plan, you know, why put the cart before the horse? We're going to plan something, but we don't, we don't own that property when we could, it's for sale. It's not included in the LTL. We're contemplating possibly doing a parking lot down the road. To me, it makes sense to just, to lump this all together right now. And for the additional, the assessed value, we'll be able to, the county's going to want to work with us. More inclined to work with us when we own the land, and we can also apply for more grants for the additional test value at 55,192. Just call it, you know, an even, just call it an even 50. Then you're, we're eliminating an issue down the road, a problem that we don't have to worry about.
Well, and I think, all right, so I think I understand your question a little better now. What the Open Space Committee's position was, whether that ever occurs in the future or not, we still saw the value in preserving the western, this portion of the western side of the Brandywine Creek and acquiring clear access to the creek from the land that we already, the old Whisahican Bottling Plant land that we already acquired. So I understand your concern about future planning, but we were not thinking, our recommendation was not based on whether the township ever decided in the future to make that a parking lot, rest area, or provide any linkage between this parcel and the Struble Trail.
No, I understand, because the open space is to preserve the land. But as far as, but as far as, if the Open Space Committee has not pondered that idea, but the Township's Board is interested in possibly pursuing that, then we could use, utilize the funds from the, from the fee in lieu of open space for the developer's account. For the additional $50,000 in funds will be matched down the road. So that's, that was my, I didn't know if you guys had actually reviewed that or not, because I think that should be included.
We, that was not part of the proposal that Jack Steffaroo put together. So, and he would have to address the particulars of why he didn't include that in this proposal.
I don't think that there, he's planning on it, is my point. That's the conversation I've had with Jack. He wasn't planning on including that in his proposal. So now we have, we're left with a parcel that is gonna, that would have to be utilized down the road if we decided to pursue that route. So I would, it makes sense to acquire at the same time that we're acquiring the other land in the same transaction. It's already been appraised. It's with the certified appraisal. It's going to save us, the township, essentially, that what the appraisal would end up costing would be, what half the land would be. So...
Well, my, my understanding is that the National Lands Trust has an agreement with John Shelton for the portion of this property that was included in the grant request. And that's what's, what we're addressing right now. So what you're proposing is that, that this, the scope of this project be expanded to include that. But that's, that's the National Lands Trust that defined the scope of the project, got the requisite agreement from, I guess it's actually from Shyrock Brothers, Inc., or from John Shelton, to acquire what is part of the whole proposal.
Yeah, I understand that. So what I'm suggesting that we add to it, you know, add to his proposal on the township's side. And we make an offer in the same motion for that, for the small parcel that would be needed if the township decides to utilize that for a parking lot down the road. That's all.
I think that that could be done as a separate transaction because if you're, if you're, right now, we are one of three parties to a proposed transaction. So to expand this particular transaction, to include that parcel, would require getting approval from the county and the National Lands Trust as well. When, if it's a standalone parcel and the township wants to pursue it, they could pursue that directly with Mr. Shelton.
Why would the county, why would we need the county's permission to purchase a parcel?
You don't need the county's permission to purchase a parcel independently, but if you're going to include that as part of this particular project, then you're, the county and National Lands Trust are involved. They're all parties to this, this proposal.
Correct, but the, but the only party to the, what I, the only party that I'm concerned with right now is the township. And that we will be purchasing fee simple for parcel 32386. So I don't see how, including an additional parcel in our motion with the township prefers to do is going to, it shouldn't affect, should not affect any other party involved. Just, we're utilizing the same appraisal to do it once instead of twice.
Luke, is our, is our vice chair joining us now?
Yeah, I will interject as a point of order. We've been joined by phone, by Mr. Sherbach. Can you hear us?
George?
Well, we certainly can't hear him. I, I've, I've been informed he only has a cell phone. It appears that he has called in and I have promoted him to be a presenter. However, it doesn't appear that he can communicate with us. So I would suggest, since he can't communicate with us, that that doesn't constitute his full participation in the meeting. So I would say for the purposes of a quorum, we have two people present, not three.
Well, for, for the purposes of the quorum, I, right now, I'm content with what I know before me, which is what the Open Space Committee is approving. So I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with this spending additional money. So I'll leave it up to you, Jason, on what you want to do.
Well, I think that, I don't think it's going to affect the open space, open space recommendation at all. It's, it's just going to put the township in a better position to receive grants down the road if we decide to go that route. So I would actually propose to add, to add that parcel thirty-two, six, two oh nine into the Asian. Originally it was a hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred eighty. Is the total funds pledged by Open Space Committee? Okay, I'm okay with that. I'd like to add the fifty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars, sixty-nine cents to be included, allocated for this parcel. Whether that comes from the Open Space account or it comes from the fee in lieu of Open Space account, we can sort that out. But in the meantime, that's what I'd like to do.
Jade, what, what are your thoughts on the committee on this? As I said, I'm okay with the one sixty-seven, three eighty and the twenty-five. I'm not okay with spending any additional money right this second until I, I at least heard from the Open Space Committee and, and we were able to do a little bit more research on this. This is odd that it's getting thrown in at the eleventh hour to add this fifty-five thousand dollar parcel. What is, what is, I guess you as a representation for the Open Space, what is your thoughts?
Well, I would want to speak to Jack Steffaroo about that because I know he's been working on that parcel. And at, at this point, we don't, you have an appraisal, as Mr. Winters has referred, as, as referenced, but we don't have an agreement of sale or a proposed agreement of sale with Mr. Shelton on that parcel. So I, I, I would be a little reluctant to want to commit funds to it without having documentation for that, which we've, we have on the other pieces, the other two parcels, but we don't have it on this one. So, but I'd be, I'm perfectly willing to confer with Jack Steffaroo and report back to the board about that particular parcel. And I'm sure that we could do that relatively quickly.
But as far as, this isn't the eleventh hour. We've been, this parcel has been, I've walked this parcel, this property a year ago, a year and a half ago. I believe Kenator had walked the property a year and a half, not even a year, when he was in office. It's not the eleventh hour. It's just this one parcel that's not included. And from what I understand from Jack suffered, that it's not going to be included. It's not going to affect what the, the county or the state as far as the Marsh Creek is trying to acquire. So motion includes to, to place an offer for the acquisition of that property at fifty thousand dollars, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, the motion does not approve that. So I guess this is dead in the water. So.
Well, we, yeah, we can, we don't have to move on. We can just see if George is on the phone.
I, I can't, sorry, again, the point of order, I cannot unmute him. If I may recommend a course of action, it sounds like it's two separate, two separate motions. The, the purchase of the, the, the two parcels for which the Open Space has recommended the board approve, which would be conveyed in part to the Marsh Creek and in part to East Brandywine Township, is a multi-party arrangement. So it sounds to me like there's a motion to approve the purchase of those two properties and a second motion from the board to direct the Open Space Committee to explore the purchase of the land in Upper Euclid Township.
Uh, yes, there, Open Space or Fee in Open Space. If, if the committee does not want to purchase it and the board desires purchase it, then we can use the fee in, in Open Space, Fee in lieu of Open Space.
But the, the, the Open Space Committee exists to advise the Board of Supervisors on the acquisition of Open Space.
Correct.
It is ultimately the Board of Supervisors prerogative to use those funds. However, I would, I, I think that, that neither our partner in, in the form of the, the Natural Lands Trust or the Open Space Committee have explored purchasing in fee the parcel you're referring to in Upper Euclid Township.
That is correct. Was, was, that was not considered because it wasn't part of the scope of the project as Jack Steffaroo defined it.
I, I believe that no one knew there was a parcel because it was, it didn't show up on the map that, from the site that was printed originally. So I think that to sit there and say that no one's contemplated this purchase and this acquisition is, is not correct. It just wasn't really. I mean, the Open Space Committee denied this request a year ago and now they're saying they'd like to do it. It's, it's not.
Mr. Winters, just to clarify, it, it's not, we were aware of this, the existence of this parcel. What we proposed a year ago was that the township, that the, the, the way it was presented to us was that the, the state would be contributing as well as the county. So we off, we recommended that the supervisors acquire the parcel and spend the, the gap money, the twenty-five thousand to do so. All I'm saying is the Open Space has not, this parcel that you're talking about was not part of that project. So it was not discussed as part of our recommendation for this acquisition. I'm not saying that we never knew it exists. We didn't know that it existed. So if you want the Open Space Committee to take a look at this particular parcel and discuss it with Mr. Steffaroo and, and then make a recommendation, I think that they would be, I'm sure that they would be willing to do that.
No, I think that's fine. I think we can just table this until we get, you know, if we get George on, we'll just table, table this to go and be included with a special meeting session minutes as well.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to chime in just.
So yes, I guess we can go ahead and.
Right.
Do two different motions.
I guess from a parliamentary procedure at this point, the, the proposal that's described in item four A, which is to spend the additional one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of the two parcels. I heard Kyle make a motion to approve that. Kyle, does that, summary?
I'll repeat it. I made a motion to go with the recommendation to Open Spaces Committee to spend the one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars in addition to the twenty-five thousand to purchase the Shyrock Open Space Acquisition of Parcels. I believe we changed it to thirty dash three eleven ninety-seven point eight nine, if I'm correct.
Correct.
And thirty-two.
Dash three.
Dash eighty-six.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and, and there's a, there's a second matter. It sounds like as the, the chairman would like the Open Space Committee to explore the third parcel, which is thirty-two, six oh nine, and the possibility of using open space funds to acquire it in fee as well.
Well, I think that, I think that whether it's open space or, or in open, fee in lieu of open space, I think that, I think that we can, we should look into that now and utilize the appraisals at one time instead of waiting. This is going to be, you know, another, another month to, to meet and what's the appraisals? Are they going to be gone? What's the status of this?
Right, well, I, if I could.
That's all I'm trying to just, it's going to save time, save money down the road, but.
I, I appreciate that, but one of the value adds of the Open Space Committee, and, and I'll reiterate that they are an advisory board, advisory committee to the Board of Supervisors, is that virtually every recommendation they make leverages at least one other source of funds. In the case of the two parcels that the board just approved, those were leveraged with county funds and they were nearly leveraged with state, although the state opted not to contribute. So when I say that, that my recommendation is that the board advise the Open Space Committee to look into this third parcel, the potential is they may find additional partners that will save the township money. One partner that immediately comes to mind is Upper Euclid Township in where the parcel is located. Another partner is Chester County, which has an interest in, in its Struble Trail location. So that is why I recommend that, that the, the, the board direct the committee to explore this topic and then report back.
I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm saying though is that regardless of those partners, if we own that land, it's going to be easier for us to obtain partners regardless. We don't need to partner up with someone just to purchase it. We could partner up someone to expand it or to even reimburse us if that's the case. So that's the direction I'm going to is whether the Open Space Committee make, gives us that recommendation or not, the township, it's in the best interest in my opinion to have the ownership of that land to be able to be a, to be able to use that to our advantage for down the road if we are to utilize that for a park, for other grants. We own the land. If the county wants the trail, then we have say in where it goes. That's going to help utilize our plan for our park. That's all, that's what I'm, that's the goal of, and my whole purpose of saying this is it doesn't make sense to not include that if we're, if it's already appraised, if it's already for sale. I think that the township should be at least make an offer with the understanding that the Open Space Committee will take a look at it. So that way we're kind of killing two birds with one stone. Depending upon whether it's that or we decide to go with a fee in lieu of not, you know, we're not talking about, you know, a huge amount of land or a huge amount of money. It's considering what we're doing. It's, it's very minimal.
Right, I, I'm, what I'm, what I'm struggling with is just converting that into a particular action item for referral.
No, that's fine. We could just table that for right now and then, and if we get George on, I might bring it up later in the meeting. It depends if we get George on or not. It depends if he, how he, I don't know what he's going to say.
George was on.
I don't think he is.
George's cell phone appears in the list of attendees. I have promoted that cell phone to be a presenter. However, I have not heard a sound from that cell phone. So I, I, I assume there is a technical problem. But I think I would refer to the solicitor for an opinion on this. Because he's not able to participate, I would say for all intents and purposes, he is not present at this meeting.
Mr. Jonas, are you with us?
I am. You know, I apologize for getting on late. I actually got more than one email stating that the work session was commenced at eleven AM and actually and it was added to my calendar as at eleven AM. But I am here now. And, and I think if Mr. Sherbach is unable to communicate and all, you really have a quorum of two right now.
So let's just, let's just table that and let's move on.
Well, we already made the motion to approve the, the one. We'll table your, well, the, the, I mean, you can make a recommendation to the Open Space to go and, and pursue it. And I think you've already done that. So I think that's asked and answered. So I think we can move on anyway. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
That was also a year ago. Thank you, Jay.
Have a good day.
You too, same. Moving on to new business, potential refunding of Series two thousand twelve and two thousand seventeen bonds. Mr. Wolf?
Mr. Wolf, can you hear us? I see him as present in the meeting as well. However, I've got a, a spinning hourglass icon indicating that he is still connected, is still connecting. I'm not sure what, what problem that is. About what, seven months into hosting these things online and I still have technical difficulties galore. I will say for the record that the, the, the communication problem relative to the, the time of the meeting that Mr. Jonas described is entirely my fault. My apologies to the solicitor.
Then why don't we go on to the, why don't we go on to appointment of IT consultants? Or do you prefer to?
Sure, I, I can. I assure you, I am here and. All right, at, at the conclusion of the regular session in October, the, 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 our existing IT consultant, which is Bert of B and D Computer Solutions, has dropped us as a client. And so staff has done some research on other IT providers. Those quotes are included in your packet. I've received quotes from IT Edge, Custom Computer and Skyview Tech. I'm very appreciative of the time that all three vendors were able to share with me in, in preparing these bids. To, in an effort to get these quotes to apples to apples, I've divided their products into three categories. One is a basic relationship with an IT consultant where they're providing work on a time and material basis. Both IT Edge and Custom Computer have such a product where there's a relationship that involves on-demand them making changes to our setup. This is the level of service that mostly describes or best describes the existing relationship that ended with B and D Computer Solutions. At one step higher is managed or we'll call it a proactive relationship with a vendor where they are actively monitoring our network. And then because some of the quotes included backup and the other quotes did not include backup, again, in an effort to make things apples to apples, I've included a third category of service, which is an off-site backup. We currently use onsite tape to record and make backups of our server. I think all three vendors would recommend us move to an off-site version. So just breaking down these numbers, these are quotes for professional services. Therefore, we are not obligated to go with the lowest qualified bidder or to advertise these. As best practice, we did get multiple bids. At this time, I would recommend that we move to custom commute, custom computers, I managed service, which is their, their, their managed product and use their backup service, which is PA Backup. I make that recommendation in the acknowledgement that as far as managed services alone, Skyview is very qualified and has the lowest proposal. However, they did not offer a time and material product. And so since I'm recommending an upgrade in the total level of service and we, we may discover that we don't need that level of, of hands-on from an IT consultant. The, the, what I think is important is with custom computer, you could go back to a time and material product if you were so inclined. Another factor in my consideration of that recommendation is that custom computer is the incumbent provider for the Police Department side of the building. And I think there is some administrative efficiency in sharing the same vendor on both sides of the building. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the quotes I received.
I don't have any.
All right, I make a motion to approve custom computer using the PA Backup Service for a new IT consultant.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your consideration. And again, thank you to all of the vendors who spent hours with me preparing this. I'm sorry I couldn't hire all three.
Move on. To the appeal decision of the Chester County Board of Assessment, appeals to Commonwealth Court, two hundred and eighty North Cuddysville Road. To the appeal decision of the Chester County Board of Assessment, appeals to Commonwealth Court, 280 North Cuddysville Road. Mr. Jonas?
Yes. Good morning. Um, there was initial filing for Board of Assessment, uh, appeal challenging the tax assessment. We have entered our appearance in the matter along, along with the other, uh, tax entities. I don't know if that is anything substantive that I can, uh, supplement at this time. As we get more information, we will update the board and the, uh, management.
Moving on to the proposal to rename the tributary of Culverton Run as Springton Creek. Luke?
Yeah, this is, this is sort of fun. Uh, you, you can do this job for a number of years and, and never realize that there's such a thing as a, uh, US Board on Geographic Names, but there is, and we have, are in receipt of a proposal to rename a section of stream that is in East Brandywine and in West Brandywine Township. It's located in the upper, or I say the, the northwest portion of the township. It is currently an unnamed tributary and the proposal is to name it Springton Creek. So at this time, I would like to ask the board, uh, authorization to execute, um, this recommendation to be returned to the US Board on Geographic Names.
Do you want a proposal to rename it or you want a proposal to?
No, no. A, a resident of West Brandywine has made a proposal to rename it. The, the, this particular federal agency is soliciting this board's feedback on whether or not to, to, um, approve the proposed name.
I think, um, me in particular, I think it would be wise for us to maybe put it on the, um, township webpage and see, and see if there's any feedback from residents, um, to include them in the process.
Shall staff add it to the, uh, November work session? Along with any feedback received?
Regular session?
Yeah, regular session. Correct. Uh, agenda item will be back in two weeks for your consideration. Thank you.
Moving on to the 2021 draft preliminary budget presentation. Vader and Mr. Wolf.
Hi Ken. Hello. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Ken.
Okay. Wonderful. Um, good morning and thank you for having us. Here's my pleasure to represent the Budget Committee. Luke, just as a administrative item, I do believe as far as Supervisor Sherbach's access. If you hover over, it says he needs to press star six to unmute from his end. So that may be some way to address that issue.
Thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Sherbach, if you can hear us, we certainly cannot hear you. The recommendation is that you push the, the, the keys star six on your cell phone.
Okay. Maybe, maybe not. All right. Are you able to see the slideshow now?
Not yet. I can confirm that you've taken control of the screen though.
Oh, okay.
You, you're going to have one more question to answer relative to sharing your screen or an individual application window.
Here it is. Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. So the, uh, committee, uh, the budget committee, just as sort of an overview for folks not in tune, comprises of multiple, uh, resident volunteers as well as staff members. Um, you know, so as we look at this year, there's obviously a lot of challenges that we face, uh, as we do in most years. And the goal for today is to really just sort of present a high level as well as some detailed review of the activity and question and sort of decision points for, uh, the board, uh, for some of the strategic direction. So to go through this, what we'll first do is look at a high level and then move into more detail. Uh, so we'll start out with just an overview. Something to note here when we look at this, uh, historically, we've spent a lot of time on the general fund. However, it's very important to note, there's a total of 14 funds, especially this year. Early in the year, when, when we were looking at the best way to, to, to manage some of these, Luke, you know, added additional funds to segregate certain activities. Uh, this year the solid waste fund is new. Last, I guess the fire protection fund is also new from this year as being segregated from the general fund. So when we look at the overall budget, it does go beyond just the general fund, uh, activity. Uh, so at this point in time, uh, the general fund's about 5.8 million in revenue. Total fund activity, uh, of anticipated revenues is, uh, 7.9 million. This is as of the, you know, this is a living document, but this is as of, uh, our last, uh, budget committee meeting on October 28th. These documents I sent over to you earlier in the week. So for the purpose of time, I'll try to move at a fairly decent but efficient pace, um, to go through these. From an expense perspective, or just as far as orientation, the revenues are all the 300 account series. And then the expenses are the 400 account series. You'll notice the last couple of funds I've excluded, really only nine of the 14 were focused on today. The escrows is purely the, the, the last five at the end there, you see the escrows is purely the, the funds coming in and out for, uh, individual, uh, activity that's escrowed for vendor use. Uh, the traffic impact fee, which has its own committee, uh, the, the open space referendum, which we just spent a good bit of time earlier discussing, and the two pension plans. Total expenses, uh, general fund of 6 million, uh, total general, uh, total expenses across all funds at this point as presentation on here is, uh, 9 million, but we'll go through a couple, a little bit of why we see what we see and, uh, action items for that. So a couple of highlights, uh, overall, before we get into it, again, currently reflecting about $190,000, uh, general fund, a deficit. So our goal is to obviously bring that down to zero. There's also at this point, no funding towards the capital expenditures. And that's why we also see a large deficit there. So part of our goal in balancing the operating budget is really to ensure that we are, uh, effectively, uh, budgeting, uh, transfers to the capital funds. So if we think about the items in capital funds, the most common thing is, especially if we look at the police, would be our, our, our police vehicles. Uh, and we, and we, and our replacement plan program for those vehicles. There's also large capital items. Uh, the other side is, is, is our, uh, public works. Uh, we think about, uh, roads, things like that. And then our parks in Raca, uh, and, and the big items there are historically have been, um, you know, a Bondsville Mill as well. The part that's a little bit concerning as to where we are now, you know, while so we have the 190,000 deficit for the general operating. The, uh, and just to put it in perspective too, it's about point, uh, point two eight mil. So if, if, if the takeaway was yes, we want to include all these costs, um, you know, from a general fund perspective, that's about a point two eight mil. Increase in order to achieve that. And that's not necessarily what, uh, we're recommending here today, but just to put it in perspective. So what's driving this? You know, overall, and we'll go into the detail in the next few slides. It's going to be increased in anticipated, uh, police labor costs as that contract is currently up for, uh, discussion, negotiation. Um, the annual non-uniform salary increases, uh, there are requests for three additional new hires. Uh, and there's, there are multiple large capital requests. Overall, we also see benefit costs as a driving factor. In, and Luke, you can confirm my number here, but I'm looking at the calculators. It looks like in addition to our salary, our benefit costs can run up to 37,000 per employee if they elect the, the family plans. So there are of course options that can be in consideration and thinking outside the box. Do we look at, you know, when we, when we do additional hires, do we look at part-time no benefits? Do we look at employee contributions? There are, um, multiple avenues to address if that becomes an area to focus on. The other side of it is the need to value determine staff capital expenditures. Uh, to note, the, the, um, the committee, um, felt, uh, important to sort of present the, all the projects that were being requested. You know, as far as, you know, picking and choosing which projects to include and not include, uh, is probably also a little bit more of, of board policy. But, and, and the goal of trying to fund that. So, you know, there is some items that I anticipate the board may, uh, suggest or identify as, as, uh, township really not being able to afford it and not necessarily a priority uh, at this point in the township. Overall, the expense needs and growth continues to, to grow, uh, you know, and in some cases, at least in this original presentation, outpaced the municipal revenue growth, hence the deficit, uh, despite strong community growth. And we'll go into a little bit about what that growth has been looking like over time. Um, East Brandywine Township does continue to be one of the fastest growing municipalities in the region. Before I move into the, um, some more of the details, any questions about the overall sort of layout and, um, structure of the, uh, the budget?
I have none.
Okay. All right. So let's dive into revenue. Uh, again, for you guys, some of this may be in, uh, a repeat. Uh, for others, this may be, uh, new and important information, but obviously for, um, our residents and folks watching, it's, I think it's really helpful. So the goal was our budget can be a very sort of cumbersome document to go through. So the goal was to try and visualize this a little bit more. So the account 300 series is all of our revenues. Here are the revenues, uh, laid out by their categories. The most significant obviously are real property taxes, uh, and the earned income tax, which is a part of our 310 account uh, under the local Enabling Act, Act 511. The, and we'll dive into both of those two on the next two slides. Uh, the additional miscellaneous items, uh, real estate taxes continues to be sort of forecasted as strong as we still have significant development. Our local services tax are for folks employed in the municipality. Permits and then other miscellaneous i- items there. The charges for service is a pretty sizable value, uh, 431,000. That's primarily composed of building permit, um, uh, activity. Uh, again, a lot of development in the community still. The account 357 local government units pass through. This could be a lot of the, the various sort of, uh, state entitlements and state, uh, funding that, uh, flows into the municipality. So we talk about real estate taxes, um, and the impact. Here's a little, a chart that just shows our, 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 our growth in this area since 2016. So when we look at our volume growth, and again, there's been no increase to the millage on this since 2016. Uh, this is all could be volume growth. We're looking, you know, we look at about, um, you know, it ranges, but you know, from between one and three, seven percent um, over this time. So the, the, the orange line is our percent growth year-over-year. Uh, the blue, uh, bars are our actual income. And you see where pretty much, uh, how we got comfort, uh, with the 20, uh, 21 budget on the, um, on the real estate taxes at 1.7 million based off of the valuations provided, uh, by the county as far as assessments. So in 2020, year-over-year growth slowed a little bit, um, which is to be, uh, expected with the, with the pandemic and items there. But again, big picture, the, uh, this area seems to continue to grow nicely. Question always comes up is to, well, if we need to balance the budget, raise taxes. So we figure we throw this slide in just to understand where do we compare with our surrounding municipalities? Uh, so we just threw a map up, literally drew a circle around us, uh, with us at the center and highlighted everybody that, that's within that circle and, and as far as their millage. And we see, um, you know, and I highlight, uh, East Brandywine at the 2.92 mils. So, you know, as far as where we stand, uh, in comparison to our neighbors, um, we are in the sort of upper middle, uh, component of that. What you see is the really high numbers are the boroughs that, you know, if you look at the county, the boroughs tend to be significantly higher from a millage perspective, South Coatesville, downtown Coatesville, um, being the immediate in, in, in our territory here. So the other item is the, our earned income tax. Again, a lot of growth in the community, uh, which continues to reflect that in our earned income tax. From this perspective, we're, you know, in some years we're looking at, you know, between three and five percent, uh, almost six percent in 2019 growth. And we see this, um, you know, um, you know, raising it at a nice pace. Again, same, same model as far as that chart. It gets, it gets us comfort around the values that we're using for the, um, the, uh, the growth. And I will say, I only brought this one up as far as the 2020 budget. It looks like we're not necessarily going to exceed the 2020 budget. So, you know, the 2021 was, is, is forecasted to be a, a little bit more similar to the 2020 budget. Again, with 2020, it's, it's, it's immediate growth being a little bit more steady as well as some, you know, many companies, uh, not, um, having raises, um, and, and furloughs and whatnot throughout 2020. Any questions on the revenue side? The revenue is, again, outside of tax increases is fairly a given amount. The, the more discretionary discussion, uh, naturally comes into play on the expense side. Okay. Okay. So we'll move into the expenses then. So again, this is where we're getting to a lot of components here. So the expenses are going to be the account 400 series. Uh, so the four to 409 is the administrative areas. These, uh, note, do not include, when we, when we identify staff salaries. This does not include benefits and payroll taxes. They're going to be a little bit later in the budget towards the end. Uh, but it does include the actual salaries, consultants, vendors and general invoice expenses related to the administrative efforts of, of the municipality. And this is how, uh, those break out. Public safety comes in at 410 to 419. Um, the overwhelming driver of public safety is going to be our, our police budget is a very large department and we'll, so we'll pull that apart separately. Um, the fire fund, uh, note is in a special fund. So once we get through the general fund, we'll move to the special funds. That's what we'll see. Fire services, the Amazon Rescue, 9,000, the code enforcement, 220, planning, zoning and emergency management. As far as police, the, uh, 2021 budget is 2.9 million. Um, the police salaries obviously driving that 1.7 overtime and other compensation, 111, benefits 900 and non-salarious expenses, um, are 160. So really this is, this is a, a major driver. This is, this is our police force. Uh, this is who protects us and it's, it's the, these cost drive to, to the people here. Um, part of this budget does include an additional FTE and, and we'll sort of get that with the recommendation. Um, just as a sort of summary perspective, again, the additional FTEs, uh, requested was, uh, one in the police, one in public works and one in the administrative areas. The vehicle and other large expenditures, uh, are not reflected in this part of the budget. It is in the capital, uh, component. Sanitation is just that, um, not significant as far as dollars and waste, primarily because solid waste moved to a separate fund. And that is reflected over there. However, we do see of the solid waste about a 15% overhead fee of about 120,000 reflected in the general fund revenues as part of the administrative component. That is all a separate finance fund through its own, uh, tax fee, um, in there. Public works is a reference, uh, again, primarily, you know, salaries. Um, there is a request for an additional FTE. The, uh, rest is some, you know, some storm sewers, drains, some, some general sort of, uh, operational items in here. A lot of public works activity is through the capital or the, uh, liquid fuels fund. Culture and Recreation, another 51,000, uh, for, in our parks and RAC areas. Uh, operating fees. So it should be separate from our development, our open space in lieu of, uh, libraries and our historic preservation. And then our miscellaneous administrative is our, is our last area. Uh, so important item here is the debt service. So we currently have, uh, and I'm excluding the, the treatment facility as that's sort of a pass-through for the, for the, for the, uh, for the sewage area. But as far as the, uh, municipal sort of, uh, budgets we're focused on today, there's a $5.6 million bond still out. That's a 2012 bond. Uh, there is an agenda item today to cover that. We sort of passed earlier, but one of those proposals is looking at refinancing that bond, which, you know, should save as far as the, off this 5.6 million bond, uh, about 20,000 a year in fees, uh, due to low rates. Uh, that bond is, is, and this chart here is a, is an excerpt from that presentation. That payoff dates in 2030. So as we look at our long-term planning, you know, we look at, uh, how that's going to impact us for there. And the rest is And the rest is sort of the miscellaneous payroll taxes, pension costs for the non-uniform. The pensions for the uniform and benefits and payroll taxes are included in the police budget already. So it's important to note for comparison purposes there, and liability insurance as well. So I stated, the general fund currently stands is a $190,000 deficit. You know, there's really limited options, I think, you know, beyond, you know, adjustments to the staffing model, whether it be a full-time, part-time composition, or simply looking at the total headcount when it comes to really both administrative and police. So I think it comes on a lot of strategic planning decisions. If we look at their capital needs, you know, I think we'd also really like to see, you know, really about a $200,000 surplus in this area in order to add a line for the transfer to capital funds. At this point, it's pretty clear, it's about 100,000 needed annually on the police side for its vehicle fleet maintenance as well, replacement program, as well as non-vehicle, some large expenses. If we look at, you know, the radar, the speed trailer, things like that. So, a couple, and again, this is purely just trying to throw some numbers out to sort of, you know, what could be one path, and of course, we'd be looking to the board for direction as far as strategic planning and paths take. But if we remove the three new requests, as well as their associated benefits and payroll taxes, we refinance, we move forward to refinance the debt. Now, the presentation also included adding an additional debt for the public works garage, but I'm excluding that for the purposes of this, and just look at just the debt refinancing. Defer the public works promotion if that's not required, if the new hire is not coming in. That takes us to a savings of 246, which immediately move us to positive 55. Again, I think there's still more work to be done. However, as we get into the capital funds, I think there's still more data to crunch and understand our long-term capital needs for the township side and public work side. That was a quick overview. Jason, I don't know if there's direction you want to take as far as discussion for these items or talking points. These were a couple I threw out, I could continue on to the special fund areas. We could stop and do some questions or discussions on the general fund now if you'd like.
It's really however you prefer, Ken.
Okay.
Right now, just trying to absorb it all.
Yeah, no, definitely, definitely a lot of data, and hopefully this presentation is a little bit more, we're trying to sort of focalize it, so, you know, versus the current budget spreadsheet, which is many, many, many top pages of tables. So we'll go ahead and continue on, just to sort of continue the overview, and then we'll move from into discussion. So as referenced, there's 14 funds, so there are 13 others beyond just the general fund we talked about. And I think this really comes down to where the priorities for the township as far as its needs. The short version is, again, if we go back to the first slide, it was what, 1.3 million or something as far as net change to the fund balance, and obviously, you know, we don't really want to see a year where we just simply deplete all of our funds for certain projects, that, you know, we really need to consider the long-term planning, and that'll be one of the deliverables we talk about at the end, about, you know, where we go from here, not only for 2021, but also really getting into a solid 10-year plan for the municipality. But the first special fund is fire protection services. This does have its own tax within the general millage, so within that 2.9, there is a subset specifically for fire. It brings in estimated 287. And we also get a little bit of share from our neighboring communities for the workers' comp, since the fire company does service a little bit outside of East Brandywine as well. So this helps to fund the fire company in addition to the, to the East Brandywine Volunteer Fire Company, in addition to the additional fundraising and direct mail and other campaigns that they do to raise money to provide fire services. So of that 287, it's important to note, only 222.9 actually goes to the fire company, 16 goes to workers' comp, 10 to fuel, and 33,000 goes to Aqua for the fire hydrant fees, to maintain the hydrants and that infrastructure in the community. There's additional 60,000 that's a pass-through, so if we will go back to that funding, we go back to the state entitlement side, there's 60,000 that passes through from the state side in order to move to the fireman's relief funding. Fire company's requested no increase this year, they recognize sort of where the community is in the pandemic and whatnot, and the so the 222.9 is the, is consistent and the same with prior years. Solid Waste is its own fund as well, this fund generally expenses equal revenues, so the invoices go out in January, it's approximately 808,000. The, it's a flat tax that goes out in January to folks, and it's distributed as such, 455 for the contract itself, and then the tipping fees. And again, that 120 is the overhead administrative, the 15% overhead to the general fund. Talked a little about the open space Sado earlier. The only thing in the budget at this point for this is 14,000 for the annual debt services for the bond related to the parks. The rest of it is now sitting in the township capital fund. Luke requested to move it there to help keep that in line with some of the many grants, and that's happening as well as with the transfers that happen, just to keep the cash flow a little bit more steady. At this point, there's really no income coming into the open space Sado for 2021. So there's a lot going on here in the township capital fund. The, what, two months ago, three months ago, the board transferred 470 from Sado into this fund. Luke can confirm the fund balance I had, I had it 514, but that was, I think, up to 60 days ago, so I'm not sure if there's been movement in that fund since. The, there's multiple grants coming in related to Bonsville and the community park bathroom, and then the requested projects as well for the bathroom on that, as well as at the parks and playground, as well as the various Bonsville Mill Park projects. Now, I do note, these are, these are purely what the the committees, the parks and the Bonsville Mill committees have requested. And again, I think need some, some, some borg, you know, view as far as need and sort of cost basis. Again, all, and that kind of goes with all these funds, because it is basically, there's a lot of these things that are unfunded, though, you know, much of, much of what we see in this particular slide is grant-funded as well. The public works capital fund. The fund balance last checked was 132. Now, by December, Luke will be presenting to transfer some funds in. However, additional request from public works is the public works garage extension at 480,000, as well as a dump truck at 160,000, of which 80,000 from this fund and 80,000 from state liquid fuels, as well as a Gator. The state liquid fuels funds brings in approximately 250,000 annually from the state, and these are for regular road maintenance, street signs, traffic signs. The public works department also requested, again, here's the other 80,000, the other half for this dump truck. And there's already 100,000 allocated for the 2021 Aspen pipe replacement project. So there's that project that's already been sort of getting planned in 2020 and carried out in 2021. There are some concerns right now, you know, again, the state liquid fuels fund is focused on maintaining roads. At this point in time, there's not been a request to pave any roads, so the 2021 repaving project line is at $0. I think that, do think that raises some concerns around managing the long-term infrastructure. And the committee's certainly requesting information regarding township needs on that. I threw in a bullet point regarding the traffic impact fee, again, that is a separate committee, and there's lots of separate rules around that. But the traffic impact fees, long-term planning certainly would factor into, and you know, at least as a contributing factor to the long-term planning on the state liquid fuels fund activities for roads, as they are both are focused on road infrastructure maintenance. So again, we've requested some information, we haven't received any of it yet, but I do think it's going to be important to understand whether it be for the 2021 budget or for future budgets. The, I think we have something, I'm going off memory, 41, 43 miles of road to cover. You know, so we should be averaging, you know, ideally, you know, if you assume it's a 20-year road, you know, maybe a mile or two a year. But there should be some calculation we're looking at to make sure that this infrastructure doesn't get ahead of us. The police capital fund. Last meeting, you approved two vehicles, looking at the fleet replacement, it looks like, you know, one to two vehicles would be required for next year as well. At 60,000 total, so 30 each, and that includes the, some of the trade-in value of the prior vehicles. Vehicle equipment at 20,000, the speed trailer 15, and the license plate reader expenses, I think that's a three-year project or something, it would be at another 5,800. As we talk about the fleet for next year, you know, one thing that came up from a committee member was looking at, and this really isn't a discussion for tonight, but just sort of long-term planning, looking at, there's a lot of departments moving towards hybrid vehicles. Police vehicle, police by definition, operation are very, their vehicles sit idle very often by pure job description. And so many departments have found savings by moving to the hybrid and allowing the vehicle to move to electric during these unique idling times. But again, I think we've loaded in, it was only a minor additional cost to go hybrid, and it does seem like there's some real significant opportunity for savings, so I think that becomes a 2021 discussion of, do we pilot an electric vehicle, or a hybrid vehicle, I should say, as part of the police interceptor SUV package? But that's certainly something to look at for next year, which I think would be an exciting opportunity for this municipality to not only save money, but start going green and moving into the future. So that brings us to the end of the year, I think, again, the committee's worked hard over the last few months to try and get to a balanced budget. Obviously, what we're presenting today for this work session is not balanced. The plan would be for the next session to get you to a balanced budget, but certainly looking for some direction and feedback as far as strategic planning, and there's also a couple open items. So as far as direction, is there any desire for a change to the tax rate? Is there any request for general fund changes? Again, that's going to be primarily related to the staffing, and the staffing and sort of headcount and infrastructure, especially for the new hires requested. Any feedback related to the capital and special funds, large projects? The police union is still a wildcard, so we have placeholders in there as far as the annual contract, which is being worked on currently. And the, if there's any impact changes to 2021 health benefit plan, though Luke, that may, you may have already provided final numbers for that, you know, I think just confirming that, I couldn't recall where that stand, if those were interim numbers or final. And then subsequent to this, once we get beyond the 2021, I think, you know, the budget committee will certainly would like to get together, you know, at the beginning of 2021, and really start to focus in on our tenure planning, which will set us up for a much easier 2022 and beyond planning structure. So that is, that is what I have, I'll turn it back over to the board for discussion and questions and thoughts.
Luke, do we have the vice chair on the phone yet?
George, can you hear us?
I would say no, the problem has not been repaired.
Do you want to do a five-minute recess? I'd seen no reason to do a recess for somebody who's known a meeting that's been going to go on since 8:00 AM this morning, it's now 9:30. He just missed, in my opinion, the most critical part of this township, the budget planning portion.
I think George's been pretty involved with the budget committee process, I don't think that his wish is to not join the meeting virtually, I think that they've been trying to, there's IT problems. It's shown that his phone's called in, he's not, he's not able to hear, I don't know if he's not able to hear us or hear him, but obviously, we're not hearing him.
Well, Ken, I would like to say, first of all, what a fantastic job you guys have done, you and everybody on the budget committee. I think it's, it speaks volumes to the talent that we have in our township. And though sometimes it's not pretty, it's a necessity to to keep everybody in the township on the right page. I personally think raising taxes during 2020 is not a good idea, or 2021, I should say. We're falling off one of the most trying times in our history with people having to pinch pennies and put off things at their own household, so I would have to think we should practice what we preach and do the same on our end. I know there's many things that we do need, and there's some things that are wants, so I think that, you know, we've summed up everything, and that's pretty much my stance.
Ken, I think you did a great job, but I do want to take a five-minute recess to try to figure out the IT issues.
I I don't have a foggiest idea how to technically do that, I can, there are participants in the room. I can certainly mute the mic in here, and we can work on that, and then return at some point, I'll just.
I'm confused what we need a recess for.
Well, we have a board member that is, is trying to be included in the meeting, and he's not able to. So I'd like to take a five-minute.
So what is the five minutes?
As chairman, excuse me, as chairman.
No, you don't need to be excused, you need to listen to me while I'm speaking. What is the purpose of the five-minute?
Kyle, you're out of line.
What is the purpose?
You're out of line, stop.
I'm entitled to ask questions. So why don't we go back to some of the questions that we had to skip over, potential new business, and give him five more minutes? We've given him an hour and a half, I'm not sure what five more minutes is going to handle. It will take us at least five minutes to get through new business, potential refinancing of the 2017 and 2012.
Thank you, we can actually have his input on that as well, too, as soon as we get him on the phone, so, like I said, we'll take a five-minute recess. Apologize for the delay to the public, we're having some issues.
George, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. Mr. Chairman, when you want to go back public here. I know that I spoke briefly with George and he indicated that he has been able to hear us through the meeting, but up to this point has not been able to respond.
Okay, good, I'm glad that we got that situated. So we're back, so everyone, we're back on, it's ten thirty-five AM, I'm sorry, nine, after nine forty-one AM. George, do you have any questions about the budget committee, about their presentation?
Uh, no, not at this time. I've been I've been dealing with Ken Ador, I guess, for the past week and a half, giving him my thoughts, ideas. And I basically had heard his presentation, you know, prior to today. So I was familiar with all aspects of it.
Good.
He did a great job, by the way, it's phenomenal what that committee did.
Yes, I think I think we all agree with that. Ken, is there any, is there anything else that you need to add or you'd like to add?
No, not specifically, really, I I think, again, looking at direction, there's, you know, items that jump out to me, there's there's three new hires. There's, you know, almost a half a million dollar capital project requested for this Public Works Garage. As far as unfunded sort of parks and rec, there's there's a request for a BACO. You know, so I think those are some of the items that sort of jump out to me. I I think at this point, you know, you know, so it's, you know, the budget committee, it's an interesting composition of, again, of residents and and staff, you know, with everyone with their unique angles. And I think, you know, some of these, you know, why a lot of these were left in, because a lot of this really comes down to, you know, really, there's strategic planning and and decision-making policy as far as, you know, of where dollars, you know, want to be spent. And really, at this point, I think, looking for some, you know, direction and thoughts as far as to where to cut, where to add. So we can continue the the planning process and and ideally deliver a balanced budget. Personally, I would also just agree with Kyle, I just, I struggle with any concept at this point of of a tax increase during a pandemic year, especially when we're seeing such consistent, healthy year-over-year growth from 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 natural growth, from natural, you know, growth of the municipality of an increased residence assessment value of homes on the earned income. So personally, I would like to see some thoughts and direction on, you know, appropriate expense control.
Well, I know as far as me personally, I understand more about, I don't see a point in expanding the Public Works Garage. I don't think it's imperative, as well as the BACO, the dump truck, I'm sorry. I just don't see what the if we can get by another year, I don't see, we just purchased a BACO, well, a BACO and a dump truck two years ago. I don't know what if 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 Kyle or George has any comments on that. If you're asking us, Ken, if we for the wishlist, if you want us to kind of go through and talk about each item, we can.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that would be, yeah, so so right now, there's there's probably a little bit grayer area of identification of 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 the various points highlighted as far as wish or requirement. And if if that's the easiest model, maybe to to go through those or to yeah, again, getting direction as far as to what what does the board feel the need to keep or maintain? And where does the board feel we could operate effectively and efficiently without? Or if there's additional thoughts as far as, you know, thinking outside the box. Again, I think if we look at, we, I think the reality is to be responsible to the community. I think we do have a cap on our total expenditures. However, I think that there is, you know, opportunity to look at things again differently, right? Recognizing benefit costs are a huge driver. Are there augmentations to the staffing model? Can you look at, you know, something that I brought up historically was seasonal, you know, seasonal work, PRN work that or part-time that may not be benefit-eligible staff. And just as a point of clarification, because I saw Matt's question just pop across the screen. The the dump truck, the hundred and sixty thousand dump truck is is the Public Works request. The BACO is the Bondsville Mill Committee request to a BACO to to work on trails there. I do know we have two BACOs at the township-owned. I don't know if there's opportunity to to utilize one of those or to send one over to the Public Works folks if there's some efficiencies gained there. I'm sorry, to send it over to the to the Bondsville Mill folks, if there's some efficiencies gained there. But just as a clarification, there's there's two different department requests.
Well, I think the BACO for the Bondsville Mill, I would be concerned on storage. I know anyway, I don't, do you have anything big enough to store a BACO for public, for for Bondsville Mill? And I'm sure Slessir is on the phone right now. Mark, are we able to, are we able to, I don't know how you would do it, rent loan the BACO from the township to the to the mill?
Mark, do you, did you hear that question, Mark?
Was that a question for me because I could not hear the speaker?
Yes, it was.
I can't, I can't hear the speaker, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit louder, please.
So the question was, is the township BACO able to be loaned or rented to the Bondsville Mill? And how would we handle that if that were to be the case?
Well, at the very least, we would need some type of a of agreement, deal with the terms, insurance. And we might just want to take another look at the transaction besides that, but certainly some documentation would be required.
The message just came on the screen from.
I was gonna say, there's a couple, there's a couple notes flying across clarifying it is a not a BACO, but a tractor. So you know, I'm not sure what specifically the differences on some of these items are, but there is some clarification being presented as far as the specific equipment request.
Is there any other, any other conversation about that?
I have none.
George, anything else?
No, my, I mean, my feeling, like I said, I've spent a lot of time with Ken over the past week and a half, digging through the numbers. My feeling is absolutely no tax increase this year. And I feel we need to really sit down and get our hands on the budget. My goal, and I think it's the same as Ken's, would be get to a balanced budget with the hope that we could find two hundred thousand to kick into capital expenditures this year. That, to me, would be an ideal way to to be able to go this year.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ken, for your presentation, all your hard work in the budget committee as well.
So I I guess my question is, where do we go from here? So I have a couple of, again, as far as open items. I guess, Luke, can, maybe we'll knock off the easy ones first. Luke, can you clarify the twenty-twenty-one health benefit package numbers we used? Are those the finalized values, are they still interim until we get the the numbers?
Well, there's a, there's a number of hires proposed, and so you can't know what type of.
I'm sorry, I mean, the value, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the the cost per person. So at at least our our single person, married couple or family plan value, are those numbers locked in as far as a cost per person? Obviously, we'll have their matrices as far as the impact on new hires. But are those calculators accurate at least?
Right, let's, let's, let's rewind. The 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 vendor is known, we will be using Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trusts. A price for an individual, a price for a couple and a price for a family is known. Those are not reflected in the calculator on the final page of the draft budget. What is hard to anticipate is there is a number of hires. And depending on the 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 type of plan that that hire opt into, makes a dramatic difference in the price. So I would say that the the value shown, like my best guess at the cost in the coming year, but it you could not draw a direct line back to the calculator on the final tab. You follow me?
I I do, I I quite, when I hear that, though, I question if the thirty-seven K I use, I assume the worst case, I I assume we were putting in the the worst-case scenario, assuming the three new hires are going to grab family plans. Do you think that my thirty-seven thousand value, which includes medical, dental, as well as the FSA, is is an accurate value used in my sort of savings model?
I have to say, more research would be necessary. Remember that there are two line items from which we pay medical bills. One is for the police department and the other is for the, we're anticipating two hires be benefit-eligible on the administration side, one in Public Works and one in administration.
Right, at one place.
Go back and the known values for existing plan, existing staff and assume the worst for both hires that are new. I suspect that figure will be higher than the figure you have.
Okay.
Have we ever requested a health insurance program where there was employee contribution? Or have the employees never contributed to the health plan?
We have contemplated requiring a match. It's a little before my time, so I'll ask Scott to correct me if I'm wrong. A previous contract with the with the Police Association in arbitration was, we've never, we've never implemented that successfully on either the police or administrative side. It has been a subject of conversation in previous arbitrations.
Well, it was, it was started on the administration side. Police in arbitration got that overturned. So that ended for township administration as well, and that was refunded.
Are we saying one side of the fence can't have contribution health plan? And the other side can't, it can't be different? Are we saying the police and the township administration have to be on the same health plan?
I'll chime in there, I I know of no rule that mandates that must be the case. My advice as a as a as an administrator and I will confess my bias, being one of the parties covered by the plan, is that that the same treatment should be given to both uniformed and non-uniformed staff.
Correct.
And does that answer your question, George?
Yep.
Is there any other key items? Ken, any other?
Well, again, so so I think that that covers the the health benefit plan line item. Again, I think that value is 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 more tied specifically to the to the new hire requests, right? The the police contract obviously is is an is an ongoing discussion and and a little bit of of a a wild card in its final outcome. So so I guess it, you know, Luke, can you go back to slide? Two, three, four, five, five, please.
I I don't have imagination, can you tell me what?
Oh, yeah, that's it, that's it. However, the, let's see here. So I I guess I just want to bring back to sort of, again, the goal, goal at play here. If we if we look at the last line here, again, if our goal is 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 no tax increase, again, our our deficit at this point is is a hundred and ninety thousand general fund. That needs to be zero slash ideally positive, two hundred in order to then allow for transfer into the other funds associated. Again, a high level, where we are now is one point, gosh, a little blurry in here, one point two, two million net change in fund balance. Now, that's not to say we can't have a negative change in fund balance and still be balanced, because obviously in our capital accounts, it's going to ebb and flow over years, right? The goal is to 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 make sure that that is 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 balanced in in the long range. However, you you'll note there, again, there's almost every account except for fire services and and trash is is negative. So so again, the 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 direction or sort of takeaway is, is what are the areas that the the board feels can be forego to to address these items? From a general fund, I think your opportunities are limited beyond staffing augmentation or. or, or hiring practice specifically for the, for the three new requests. And then from a, the capital side, it's, it's identifying a list of what items to address, to, to remove, and then I think the other item was the debt services refinance, which was going to be presented earlier today, which does, at least from, from how I looked at it, and, and others, especially Scott can confirm, you know, addressed about another 20,000 on, on the savings for the general fund side. So it's still a pretty big egg to crack here, and, and, and need some, some, some consensus or direction about which, which direction to start cracking.
Is there, I guess we got to hear the presentation about the, that's a recommendation that you would make on behalf of the Budget Committee for the $20,000 a year savings?
Um, yeah, as far as the debt finance, you know, I, I don't see any reason why not to unless there's something in the fine print. We, we did not have a presentation, the gentleman, I guess, Mr. Wolf was going to present today to the board. We did not have that presentation. We merely had the document presented to us for review. Scott, can you, can you weigh in here as far as that, that item?
Weigh in as far as, well, basically, you're saving the, I believe it was 100 and, it's 170, 178,000 dollars over the, the term of, I believe it's 16 years. So it's, what, roughly 20, 25,000 dollars off the top of my head a year that you'd be saving for the series of 2012, which is the township building and open space. And then the bond, the 2017 bond is the capital costs, which would save the municipal authority roughly 30,000 dollars a year.
And as far as Kyle, George, is there, is, what direction, do you guys have any comments on what direction to try to go to try to make up this deficit? Or do you want to go back to the, instruct each of the department heads to try to sharpen the pencils? George, you're part of this?
Yep, yeah, I know. I'm, I'm trying, I'm going, I'm getting in and out, so I hear some and hear not. I think, I mean, I don't have the papers in front of me, because I had all my thoughts when I was talking to Ken. I mean, I think we gotta go to no new hires. I think we need to freeze any new hires. You know, that's the start. I, I really think we, I really think we need to go from two managers to one manager. I've always felt that from six years ago, when Luke was hired, I really still felt that a one manager could handle this township in that position. So that's, that's another situation that I believe needs to be really looked at. Like I said, I don't have any, I don't have the slides or any of the other things with me, but that's where it starts. But I think, you know, once again, once I get back, I think we just need to crunch down and go through everything. Of course, we need to find out what, what the police situation's going to be with negotiations. I'm not sure what's factored into this current budget presentation. So those are my initial thoughts, and I have more, but once again, I just don't have my notes with me. I wasn't com, you know, I wasn't sure whether I could get on today, and I do have to break away probably in the next 15 minutes.
I think we're gonna be most likely holding a special meeting in between now and the, the evening session to try to work on the budget a little bit longer, plus the police contracts. Try to get them finalized. So I guess we can work on that, you know, when you get back from vacation and the board's available. All that special meeting.
That's fine.
I think that, I think enough to move on. Ken, I do appreciate your time, as well as the Budget Committee's, all their efforts and input on how to get our township on the right track for next year. Moving on is the Chapter 43,2 Appointment and Removal of Township Manager. This is an ordinance, part of the East Bray and Wine Township's ordinance, and it has to do with procedures to appoint and to remove a township manager. Basically, this would go back on, we're just commenting on a couple minutes ago about his feelings with two managers to one, as well as I do share that feeling. Is there any discussion, George or Kyle, any comments?
Not for me.
Um, Kyle? I'd like to, like to make a motion to provide our township manager, Scott Pierceall, written notice. The Board of Supervisors intent to remove him as our township manager in 60 days or January 5th, 2020. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the award for Bonsville Mill.
Uh, yeah. Um, we've got, um, well, I, I guess, I should say, Nate Klein, Township Engineer, has done an outstanding job in getting the, we had a bid for work at the Bonsville Mill Park. If you'll recall, we rejected all the bids last time we did this. And bids opportunity closed at, at 10 a.m. yesterday, and the apparent low bidder was Brightfields of Wilmington, Delaware. Mr. Klein has completed his diligence and is prepared to recommend that the contract for Bonsville Mill improvements be awarded to Brightfields of Wilmington, Delaware in the base bid of 262,710 dollars plus the alternate for a total of 264,960 dollars. At this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to award this contract.
Do we have a-
Yeah, there's a, there's a cover letter. It arrived late yesterday. Like I said, it's a pretty incredible turnaround to have the bids close at 10 a.m. and then have a recommendation by 7 p.m. It is the, the, the green letter in your packet? I'll just give you mine.
Kyle or George, you have any comment on the award to Brightfields, the 264,960 dollars? Their base bid plus the alternative, Bonsville Mill?
Not aye.
Do you have anything to say? I'd like to make a motion to award Brightfields 200, the contract for the Bonsville Mill improvements for the total base bid plus the alternate, contingent upon the execution of the contract to supply the required bonds and assurance within the appropriate time for the amount of 264,960 dollars. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, I gotta break away. I apologize.
That's okay. George, you have a good vacation. Wish you well. Be safe. Thank you.
Yep, and when we come, when I come back next week, I do want to immediately dig into the budget so that we can get Ken and the committee, our, all of our feelings, and see how we can get this budget in, you know, in order. Thanks. Take care.
I agree. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, moving on to subdivision and zoning applications, the Mapleview Phase 2 developer agreements and financial security agreements. I'm assuming these have been reviewed by Mr. Pierceall and Mr. Jonas, as well as our engineers?
Correct.
And you're, you're okay with everything as presented?
Financial security is in place, and the agreements are the same agreements that were used for Phase 1 of Mapleview Development.
Want to make a motion or anyone?
Making a motion, Super.
I'll make a motion to execute Mapleview Phase 2 developer agreement and financial security agreements. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
An executive session was held by the Board of Supervisors on October 5th, 2020 to discuss personnel legal matters. As far as this bond, do we want to, are we gonna circle back to, to review the, this bond for this meeting? Or do you want us to just table this till the following meeting, to the regular session?
Are you talking about the presentation from Mr. Wolf, Reboni Scattergut? Yeah, we, we're in similar technical difficulties in, in getting Mr. Wolf to join. I accept responsibility for that. I would recommend that we return to the agenda item at your November 19th meeting.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and table that till our next meeting, regular session meeting, as well as the special minutes of the October, I think that was, I'm missing it here.
October 10.
October 10, special meeting, the approval of those minutes, we can table that as well. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.